...Board, November 24th meeting. Up first on our agenda is a review and approval of the October 27th meeting. Anybody have any comments on the meeting minutes? Based on that, do I have a motion for approval of the minutes?
No move.
Second. Thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Okay, we do have a public hearing on LP building this two lot subdivision. And what I ask you to do, I think we have a mic on, so if you can use a podium to talk, we'll go from there. Usually the mic helps not so much for us, but we're being recorded on television. So what I'm going to do is use the list and we'll call you by name and... Generally, when you get up, state your name, your address, and since we have a few of them, we'll give you as much time as you need on it. Eric, you're first up.
Thank you.
Mike, do we need to make a motion?
Oh, it's a make a motion to open a public hearing?
So moved.
Making, all in favor? Yeah, unless you need...
I'm Eric Scott. I live at 28 Cedar Ridge Road in the town of New Paltz, and I've been to every one of the planning board meetings that are involved in this subdivision discussion. I'm here because I want to protect my property from any further damage by inappropriate development. I've lived here since 1986 and have always been active in the community. Most recently, I'm volunteer member of the New Paltz Police Department as the medical director and medical director for the New Paltz Rescue Squad as well, so I do stay active in the town. As I explained, when I first came before this planning board in January of 2014, my property and that of my neighbor Vince Luth, who joins me in our position for this project, was, used to be heavily wooded, densely wooded, but in 2006, I first started to notice that my land was becoming less usable. It was wet almost all the time and for prolonged periods, and trees started to die off. Over the next eight years, I've had to have professional woodcutters come in three times to take down dead trees because safety has been imposed. I want to give you an indication of just how the water has damaged the trees in the area, so you know what kind of impact of it. This is a quite great profile, it's the best I have here. This is 2006 in the order. This is my house, and here is the area of interest property. This is the area between the VFW, there's a real house next to the VFW, and this is a house in Alex, Bluebri's house in 208, at 109 208. This area is where they intend to build. This area down here is all my land, and although it's all, you can see the trees are heavily lined through there. In this area here, I'm pretending, because where the border damage has been. And it's this area, all treed. In 2010, this is a better picture because it's now, everything is leafed out. My house is here, you can't see it because of the dense woods. Here's that area where they intend to build that subdivision, and there's dead trees throughout this area, extending all the way down here into Mr. Luth's property at 30 Cedar Ridge. If you go back there, and some of you were there in April or May, I believe, and walk the land, and you can see all the dead trees that died on the ground that had just recently been cut. My house is in here, you can barely see it, but here is the area out in the woods where my property has been, just denuded with trees. I'll keep those, these are killing, maybe also sitting again later. So I've got concern about this, and I contacted the Ulster County Soil and Water Conservation District, and the executive director, Gary Capella, came out to the property and walked it for several hours with me, took many photos, and then came back to me with an explanation of what he thought was going on. Basically, what he explained was that the soil on my property is something called volusia v. I'm not smart, I'm not a geologist, but I can tell you that it is a soil that doesn't percolate, it doesn't allow water flow. It has a dense clay layer below it, and then above it is a very thin layer of pals soil, probably about six inches. And I can tell you that it's no more than six inches because I dug post holes this year in what used to be my woods to make a fence, to put in a fence for my garden, and in 15 minutes, every post hole that's two and a half feet deep was filled with water, totally unusable area for that. Anyway, he came by and explained that it was water coming in from 208, and because the soil up there percolates well and passes all kinds of perk tests, the problem being that it comes down to my level and doesn't go anywhere. That water is warm, comes down through the soil, hits my level of soil, the clayey soil, and just lays there for prolonged periods. He recommended certain remedies. I took those remedies, I hired an excavator, brought the excavator in, and he worked for two days clearing trenches, digging swales, as he suggested, as the executive director of the Ulster County Soil and Water recommended, and there was no benefit from it. It was costly, but no benefit from trying to remedy the situation according to his recommendations. It's been a continued saturation of the land and progressive tree loss since that time, as recently as, I guess, I guess the summer of 2013 was I had the last crop of about 20 trees taken down, and these were big healthy trees. Vince Luth's concern, and mine, is that any further development on that hillside above our properties is going to result in worsening of an already compromised situation, and our properties will become unusable to us and lose their inherent value. They're certainly losing value as a recreational area for us, and certainly not buildable. If you wanted to do anything back there, you can hardly use it much of the year. Moving on to talk, you know, I know much of this discussion here has been meeting 50-year standard, a 50-year storm standard, and I know that's important, and that's how the engineering calculations work. I want to show you some pictures. This is from July 2nd, this picture is July 2nd of this year, and the date still can be verified because I sent Dave Clausen the pictures as soon as this was taken, or that day. This is the culvert that separates my property on Cedar Ridge from Mr. Luth's at number 30. These are 24-inch pipes. This is on July 2nd at 4:07 PM, looking from my property into his culvert. It's some, you know, and I can't even tell you just my addresses, but my property is up here, his property is out here. This is water that drains down through my woods, exwoods, down into his property, and then goes down into the culvert. This was on July 2nd, 2014. This is not a 50-year flood. This was a routine storm. I looked back at precipitation records, which I have here, I've been entered to be commentary here for today. There have been five storms from last November through August that were greater, very greater in volume than this. This was about 1.2 inches. Everyone above, was above that at 1.4 to 2.19 inches. This is just a 1.2-inch rainstorm. This is on July 2nd. Next day, we have some more rain. This is the same culvert area, just looking down into the culvert. So this is, if I took this picture and turned it around, this is where it is now, looking down from Mr. Luth's driveway. You can't see the culverts, they're covered. This, and that's at 7/11, this is at 7/09. Mr. Luth took this picture just after this, he was standing in here. This is his driveway. Mr. Luth's driveway was completely inundated and inaccessible, and that inaccessible area is a real concern. No rescue vehicles, no BMS, no police, no fire can get through there, no one would So there's some palpable problems we see with this, without anything else happening worse, anything further development that may impact that area. We believe any further development will impact that area terribly. Because this issue is so important to us, to Mr. Luth and I, we have hired an attorney and a civil engineer. Civil engineer is John Bodendorf, and the attorney is John Lyons, who specializes in environmental land use. I'm going to leave the critical topics of appropriate, the appropriateness and viability of LP builders' proposal and their conformity with existing codes for them to discuss, who could far better than I can do it. But I do want to clear something up. I've come to several planning board meetings where I was not able to speak, and I understand the process, and I was astounded to hear the engineer for LP builders talking about that the water from their property does not enter my property, and any water that does is immediately given, switched over to Mr. Luth's property. Well, first of all, Mr. Luth doesn't support the water being pushed over to his property, but I'm not sure I physically can understand how that's possible. The entire western or downsloped border of the projected subdivision is contiguous with my property. The water cannot go anywhere but through my property to get anywhere else. It has to go through my property. What that water does is it comes through my property, hits what is called an agroville fan, I think that's what it's called, I put that somewhere. It hits soil and then just spreads out and diverfaces and disperses all through my property and Mr. Luth's property, and then comes down to swales down at the end of Cedar Ridge. I have some pictures. John, was there some of the pictures? Yeah, is it still here? Yeah. That's the further pictures. I took this today, it's dated, you can see the photos. Let me show you this first. Let me orient you. It's not too cheap this way. This is the land that's proposed to be developed uphill here. 208 sits up here. This is the channel that comes down from the culvert that goes under 208 and conducts water down, that pretty much bisects the property that they wish to develop. My property begins about over here. This water comes directly down here, and comes down and goes into, this is now my property. This is the logging wood that's referred to in the different plans that you may be aware. The logging room comes down like this. I want you to know this, this is today, probably around 8 o'clock this morning after the rainstorm overnight. There's no water in this swale. I can't tell you there's no water. It's not running water. It's wet. You know, it rained last night. This is the water running down the hillside from their property. It comes directly through here, down into my property. Mr. Luth's property is out here and out here. Now, the point I'm trying to make is this, this is a close-up. You see this area here, this hole here? If you really want to see this closer, ask me to do it, I will. Here, this is just a close-up of it. This water doesn't go anywhere else, it comes straight down. So for the engineer to say that the water doesn't come into my property confuses me to some degree, and in the most recent plans that were submitted, on page three of the plans as a matter of fact, it shows water going this way up north on what was the old logging wood. The old logging wood doesn't exist anymore, of course, and what it does, as you can see, here's where the logging wood comes all the water now, and here's where the main mill water comes through from the south. This is south down 208. This is north towards the VFW. All the water's coming right down here. You might be able to see, this is a better place to see, because I want you to be aware that there is some water infiltrating the top here, but it's not going northward, it's just coming right back down into the stream. But if you look apart at sheet three of the plans that were submitted just last week or two weeks ago, it shows that the water doesn't come down here, but rather diverts north, and it's a mean trick because this is, you can see, you might be able to touch here, this is uphill. This water can't go uphill here. It's, it's in a bow. It can if it floods, and it does flood, and then it will go up this way upward, otherwise it's coming down here. So I question that, and I question why it's been presented to you folks time and again that the water doesn't come through my property. So I want you to address that. I must tell you also, I have several neighbors who are here, and although, and I also have some statements from neighbors who are close to it, so I'll present that to Kelly at the end. But although it's not a true planning board issue, I'm going to bring it up, and you can cut me off if you must. One of our concerns is that our experience has been that a house that was built at 109 Route 208 was a private home for a very short period of time, and then was turned into a rooming house, first a fraternity house and a rooming house. It's been the source of many complaints from many of the neighbors calling police about noise, about floor property management. If you go out there now, and one of my neighbors is here today who drove by, you can see the beer kegs still on the hillside of that property. Now, I don't know who's going to buy this house. I don't know the outcome, but this is right next to the college. It's going to be right up on the hillside. I can't believe that it's not going to turn into being, sooner or later, student housing that's not going to be well cared for and not an attribute to the community, or certainly not to our neighborhood. It results in more traffic flow, skews in and out, these are famous for their parties. It's already happened all the way down to 208, south of the VFW. Several of those houses have become fraternity houses or apartment buildings rather than single-use houses which they were initially applied for but never, never became. I want you to know also that about six weeks ago, Mr. Luth and I, through our attorney, approached Mr. Papaja's attorney and made an offer to buy his property for the same price that he paid, so he would not take a loss on this event. We've not heard back from Mr. Papaja's attorney. Our offer still holds, and no, we would not consider putting any development up there if we did obtain that property. An issue that I've really given great thought to is that this subdivision application, if it's approved, if the systems that are in place don't work, or if they're not put in properly, or if they're not maintained to standard, I want to know who's going to replace the trees that are lost, the habitat that's destroyed, the soil that gets eroded, washed down into the wallkill? Who's going to be responsible to make it right again? When New Paltz enacted its steep slope protection codes in 2004 in Article 140-133, it made it clear that, and in quotes, "Protection of steep slopes require preservation whenever possible to the greatest extent possible." My belief is that the benefits to the town from this project are small, and the potential losses and damages are great. I urge you to reject my proposal. Thank you.
Thanks, Eric.
Good evening. I'm John Bodendorf, Mr. Stutz engineer. I'm with Hudson Land Design, we're a civil environmental engineering consulting firm out of Beacon. We're located at 174 Main Street. Mr. Stutz retained our firm in January of this year because of his drainage problem and his concerns over the proposed development. I personally conducted a site visit with Mr. Stutz in January, and despite the cold and all the snow cover, it was very obvious that his problem was real and that his concerns were valid. Our firm has prepared comment letters as this project has progressed, one in January, one in March, and the most recent just last week. I believe Mr. Stutz has given copies to the planning office, and rather than read all my comments, I just want to point out the major issues as I see them. First, related to the approved septic designs, while I know we can't do anything about that approval, I just want to go on record saying we disagree with their decision to approve both of them. They ignored some state requirements in approving them, which are normally the bare minimum that a local health department can approve. One of the requirements is that these types of systems not be installed on slopes that exceed 20%. Both systems are proposed on slopes that exceed 20%. The other is the proposed system on Lot 1 does not meet the minimum separation requirement to a drainage ditch. Again, I don't know if the town can do anything about it at this point, but should definitely consider making your determination for the project. The next point is with respect to the stormwater management improvements they are currently showing. While we're pleased that the applicant is proposing to try and help mitigate the existing drainage problems for the downstream receptors, we have serious concerns about how the improvements are going to be inspected, maintained, and repaired in the future. Right now, there's a note on the plan stating that it will be the individual lot owner's responsibility, and that simply won't work. There needs to be some kind of mechanism in place to assure that those systems can be inspected, maintained, and repaired, and quite honestly, with the current layout, I'm not sure that there's a safe access to all of the proposed improvements. So I don't know how that's going to be addressed, but leaving it up to the lot owners is not a good idea. In all of our letters, we've noted that the limits of disturbance are not shown properly on the plan, and we think if they include all of the proposed disturbance, the total disturbance may exceed an acre, which would kick this into requiring a basic stormwater pollution prevention plan. And again, maybe a moot point, but I just wanted to echo Mr. Stutz's statement about their existing conditions plan that was added to the set. It's not a real accurate depiction of how the drainage flows over Mr. Stutz's property. That's all I have.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is John Lyons. I am an attorney. My practice is dedicated to environmental and land use law. The name of my firm is Grant and Lyons. Our offices are in Rhinebeck, New York, and I represent Eric Stutz and also Vince Luth, who are the neighbors to this proposed subdivision. I've submitted some letters to your board previously as part of the earlier segment in the review. I have a written submission prepared for you tonight, which will turn in, and like John, I'm not going to go through every piece of that tonight, but I just, like John, I also want to hit the high points, and I want to talk to you tonight also, I think about, a little bit about the bigger picture here, because I think that that's really something that's important, and it's something that I would like to have you bear in mind as you move forward with your decision-making. I think that you probably know better than me, having been in the position that you're in and looked at many applications, that not every piece of property is suitable for subdivision. And that's the reason why municipalities enact subdivision regulations. It's a way to set forth an objective criteria for us as a community to decide which pieces of property should be allowed to be split. In this case, we think this is one of those pieces that just isn't suitable for subdivision, and we're here to ask you to deny the approval. An expression that my former partner, my deceased partner, used to use is that, "This is 10 pounds of flour in a 5-pound sack. It's too big. It's too much for this piece of property." And Eric and Vince are, I think that you've found, since, you know, you've had a chance to listen to them before, that they're not finicky, anti-development people or nimby's or something like that. They live underneath this slope, and I was out walking around in the property, and you can see the trees that have died, and you can see, actually, that picture doesn't really even tell you how big that culvert is. I mean, you can hop down, when we were down there the other day, Vince and Eric hopped down into that culvert, and they're up to their shoulders. I mean, it's a really big space that gets filled by that water. So John is their engineer, and he's, and, you know, he said it best when he tells you that the problems that they're facing here are very real. And so we're looking to you as the planning board. One of the things that your subdivision regulations say is that one of the purposes of the subdivision regulations is to assure the comfort, convenience, health, welfare, and safety of our citizens. And it also says that "All the lands to be subdivided shall be of such character that it can be safely used for building or other purposes without peril or adversely affecting the public health, safety, or welfare of the public, occupants of the land, or adjoining residences or uses." And so we're before you at this public hearing, asking you to protect the neighbors, to use the authority that you have to make sure that this subdivision application is measured by the standards that are set forth in your subdivision guidelines, and if they don't meet those standards, as we contend, that this application should be denied. And I know that you've done that in the past, and we'd ask you to do that again in the future. I just want to hit some other points and say that John asked a question to you in his remarks about the septic systems, which were inexplicably approved by the department, the county department of health. He said, "Well, you know, I don't know if the town can do anything about that." Well, the good news is that actually you can do something about that. There are two separate sections of your subdivision regulations that I've cited for you in our written materials, which set up the planning board, an independent standard for the planning board, to make sure that the septic systems are proper. And one is Section 121a D of the subdivision regulations, which says that you have to assure yourselves that the septic system is properly endorsed by the county department of health, and I want to say that it's our position that "properly" means correctly, and so in this particular instance, we do not think they were properly endorsed. And also saying is meeting all the applicable standards and requirements of the state or county health department, and it's our contention, and John's detailed in the materials that he submitted to you, that we don't think that these septic systems meet the state health department requirements. There's another section in your law which also deals with wastewater sanitary sewer systems, it's Section 121-24C3, and it says, "Where no existing or planned public sewers exist, lots shall be provided with separate sewer facilities." lots shall be provided with separate sewer facilities. Such lots shall be of sufficient size according to the character of the land and the size of the system to provide adequate leaching or satisfactory performance of the system in compliance with the regulations of the town, the Ulster County Health Department, and other appropriate authorities." And so, I would like you to please bear in mind that we believe that the state health department regulations are other appropriate authorities. There's a reason, from an engineering standpoint, that the state doesn't want to have systems like the ones proposed on land that has a steep, severe grade, like the land in this particular case. And my clients are in the absolute worst position with regard to the consequences of that, because failures are going to flow downhill right into their backyards. The other big concern that we have moving on from the septic systems is that John raised in his letter to you, and all of his letters are attached to my piece, so you're going to have those as part of your record. But I think there's a pretty, well, some creativity, I guess, has been used in trying to design the stormwater disposal system for this property, and it involves infrastructure. And the plan of saying that the maintenance is going to be done by whoever buys these properties really is no plan. Even if we accept the premise, and we don't because of the comments that our engineer is making, but even if we were to accept the premise that this system would function as represented, it's only going to function as represented if it is maintained in proper condition. And that's not six months from now, and that's not two years from now. That's in perpetuity. It needs to be maintained in perpetuity. And some mechanism needs to be put in place if you're to even consider granting approval for this, which we don't think that you should. But long after the applicant is gone, and Vince and Eric will still be there, and they'll be stuck with the consequences, and the town will be stuck with the consequences, and it's, I think that it's part of your set of responsibilities to think about those things. And as far as we're concerned, nothing even has come close to talking, identifying what those maintenance responsibilities are going to be, who's going to pay for those, who's going to maintain them, who's going to monitor them, what's going to happen when these facilities come to the end of their useful life. And I will tell you, as you probably know, perhaps better than me, that, you know, stormwater facilities that aren't, where the maintenance isn't secured by some kind of district or something like that, don't have a good record of being maintained by your ordinary homeowner, especially in this case where the bad consequences of lack of maintenance are going to run down the hill, down the vents, and not really have much of an impact to people that might be in those houses. That's the tip of the iceberg of the kind of things that we'd like you to be thinking about here, and that are completely missing from this application. I'd ask you to look carefully, if you would be kind enough to, at the, John's, you know, he touched just the highlights tonight, but he has some other detailed comments. And the bottom line for us is that we're hoping that you will protect the neighbors, that you will do the things, when you read the purposes and goals of the Town of Newport subdivision regulations, and what we're trying to guard against, and what we're trying to accomplish as a community, we hope that you're going to do that. We're hoping that you're going to, you know, stand up for the neighbors in terms of making sure that the requirements of the regulations are implemented here. I thank you very much for your kind attention and the time and the opportunity to speak. And Kim, if you'd be kind enough, we're going to give you our written submission right now.
Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Just give it all to Kelly, and then go back and out later on.
You have, one for each board member, and then one for George, and one for Dave. Okay, is that sufficient?
We'll make sure we take them before we leave tonight.
We may not be giving away all of those.
My name is Liam O'Neill. I live at 120 Route 208, which is right across the road from this proposed subdivision. I've lived there since 1992, when we bought our property. My concern is what the use is going to be of these two proposed homes, if it is subdivided. The house next door to it, number 109208, used to be a family occupied residence until about 15 years ago, when the owners moved into town and they started to rent it as a student rental building. And over the years, it became a fraternity house, Eric mentioned it already. And there would be parties there, you know, several nights a week. It became a real public safety hazard. Police department were out there every week. At one point, there was some gunshots fired hot there, and eventually, the police department got no parking signs put all along Route 208 to try and, you know, keep a lid on the situation, because every time there was a party there, the whole place was choked up. And when parties are going on at night, you have, you know, seemingly hundreds of students streaming out of the village and out from the campus out along 208, where it's not lit and there are no sidewalks. So it was a real safety concern. So that house seems to be, it's not rented at the moment, because it looks like it's really destroyed on the inside. But when I saw this proposal to subdivide this property and put two houses on it, it seems to me the only reason that you would want to build two houses on this really lousy piece of property, which is kind of in a hole, would be to rent them out to students. So if that were to happen, and we have three houses in a row that are student rentals, it's going to make the situation, the partying, the safety hazards of people walking along the road where there's no sidewalk and it's not lit, and cars going in and out of driveways, that have been several accidents from 109208, where there could be like half a dozen, maybe even a dozen cars jammed into the parking lot, people pulling out of there, causing accidents. So that's what my concern is. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Bob Cohen. I'm a resident of Newport for many years, and a friend of Dr. Eric Stutt's for many years also, maybe 25 years or more, and had the opportunity. First, a little of my background. I'm a local builder, and a little developing also. I also went to school at State School for Environmental Science and Forestry. Doesn't make me an expert, but I have an idea, you know, about building and about woods and trees. I was a forest biology major, by the way. Anyway, over the last 25 years, I've spent a lot of time at Eric's house. And one thing about Eric is, there'd be a tree growing, you know, over the driveway, and I'd say, "Why don't you cut this tree down? You've got plenty of trees." And he says, "No, I don't, I don't want to cut a tree." He really likes being in the woods, and was in the woods. And somehow, all that changed, and I observed his property being basically become some kind of a swamp. You've all seen, you go on the road, and there's an area that's been flooded and the dead trees there? Well, the hardwood forest, ash, maple, oak, a few other species, all lost their leaves and just started to die. Good source of firewood for a while, until it rotted out. But anyway, it turned this heavily wooded property into a wet, unusable piece of property. And I'm sitting here, and everything I'm hearing, I'm just, what the engineer and the lawyer are saying, I can, I verify that's all true, but it's all change. He's got a lot of water, and the water's coming down the hill in the back. Anyway, I understand builders want to build and make money doing it. But what comes to mind is if you're building on an area with a slope greater than 20 degrees and putting septic there, we already, there's already water discharging, as you can see in the pictures and in the other testimony. But now, you're putting two septic systems up there. And when they design septic systems, whenever we put in septic systems, there's always the reserve that needs to be put in. And as I know, most of you know, the reason for the reserve is, when the septic fails, it gives you the opportunity to put in another system. Well, in this case, when the septic fails, you're basically uphill. Just now, you have the water discharging, and a failing septic system would just be, make matters that much worse. And again, I understand the builders need to make money. I think Eric's offer would be generous at this point, because I think I wouldn't want to build on that property. The slope is steep, it's difficult to build on, and I think impossible to maintain over the long run. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Richard.
Yeah, I thought that was assigned to G.I. Michael Myers.
Okay, thank you. Does anybody else wish to make a comment? Public hearing.
Representing the applicant, would you like to hear it this time, or at the closing public hearing?
Generally, the applicant makes their presentation when we do our review. But if you want to make a statement in a public hearing, you can make a statement.
I'd like to do that only, I'm going to try to represent the applicant, because there's been some misstatements, some statements made that deserve a response during the public hearing, if that's all right.
My name is Joe Ariel. I'm an attorney representing the applicant in this matter. I do want to address several of the things that have been brought up at the public hearing throughout the application. I am glad that my colleague, Mr. Lyons, quoted you the standards that you have to apply, because the application in this case has met and exceeded them, as I'm sure you know. And applying those standards would do nothing but lead to an approval in our, not just in our opinion, I think it's factually correct. I think the board knows that, and has done its due diligence, certainly above and beyond what the code requires. And their position is stated as if the applicant, and all applicants, don't also have rights protected by the code. The basis of their objection to the DOH approval are factually false, and our engineer, Mr. Brown, is here and can speak to them, they're just simply factually false. And the notion that you should substitute, that anything in your code suggests that you should substitute your judgment for the judgment of DOH in these matters is patently absurd and legally dangerous. So I ask you to take very seriously that suggestion as being really just, I hope and expect that the board will not take it seriously. This project has been designed to standards that don't even apply to an application of this nature. It's been rigorously reviewed by this board, for which you deserve credit, and I expect that a great deal of that due diligence has been expressly because of the sincere nature of the objections raised by the neighbors, which you've heard again here tonight. You are to be credited with that. The applicant, despite disagreeing with many of the allegations and concerns and the connection between the neighbor's concerns and his property and project, has acquiesced and has met the comments suggested by your engineer throughout this process at great expense. I would also mention, and I'm sure this has occurred to you already, that the notion that paying my client what he paid for the property would make him whole in this instance is also patently absurd and irrelevant. The project's been over-engineered to protect against runoff. The comments of the town engineer, as I said, have been satisfied, even where my client has not necessarily agreed with those comments. We're not going to stand here and suggest that the concerns of the neighbors with respect to the state affairs on their land, Mr. Stutt in particular, are not true, are not real, are not heartfelt. We're not going to suggest that the concerns about the nature of how housing ultimately gets occupied in this college town often turns to college residents. Those things may all be true. What is missing from the record is a factual connection between this project and those problems. That's what engineering and planning is for. The notion that you should simply say that because they're uphill and I'm down, water definitely runs onto my property from theirs and will continue to do so unfettered, is simply not true. And you've been at this a long time, the science does not support it. And there has to be, your decision has to be based on substantial evidence in the record. So again, our engineer is here tonight to answer some of the specific questions that have been raised, and comments that have been raised with regard to the engineering aspects of the application. But I would just ask again, that the board trust its consultant, its consultants on this case, trust your own judgment, you were out at the site. Trust the level of due diligence that you've done, which again, has exceeded that which is necessary for an application of this nature in terms of its technical and objective requirements, and we urge an approval. And I would just like to ask Mr. Brown to address some of the specific issues raised. Thank you for your time.
I like it. I guess the biggest thing is the drainage. As Mr. Stutt said, there is an issue. It predates this, by his own admission, predates this application. The amount of land that our property, percentage-wise, of the drainage area that drains through Mr. Stutt's property, is actually negligible. There's a large 24-inch culvert that comes underneath Route 208, that drains a substantial portion of the college, that runs through our property. Again, we've gone above and beyond the code. We've mitigated the increased imperiousness of our site, the filtration trenches. We put check dams in the existing swale to slow the flow of water, to mitigate the erosion. But I think the point that's being missed here is that the water that's affecting Mr. Stutt's property is really coming down a pretty good-sized stream that runs parallel to Cedar Ridge Road, some places in the back of some of those lots, and then it comes to the swamp of Mr. Stutt's lot. That is a huge, huge area. It's the area from Cedar Ridge Road, between Cedar Ridge Road and 208, all the way up to where Cedar Ridge comes off of 208. That water is what is creating the problem with Mr. Stutt, in addition to the water that's already coming underneath the road from the college. We have, again, mitigated any additional loss to our project. And with respect to the septic systems, they are not on slopes over 20 percent. I don't know where that IBA came from, they're on slopes between 15 and 20 percent. The health department doesn't allow that. We have actual permits issued, so I think that that's a moot point. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Charlie. Anybody else wishing to make any comments at the public hearing? Okay, with that, we're going to move along on our agenda, and we'll pick up some of what we have initially, what we have to raise with LP builders. So if you want to stay around for just a bit longer to hear it. Next up is public comment period. Anybody wishing to make any public comments that were not public hearing notices? Do so now. Having none, move off to the application review. We have the cafe, Vitality Cafe. Dave, you want to bring us up to speed on that?
This is a new tenant, and the space in the Newpaul's Plaza that was the Jamaican Choice Restaurant. The new tenant is proposing to have a little, a small cafe in the front and a yoga studio in the back. There's no interior structural modifications. It's less than 4,000 square feet, and it meets the criteria for a simplified site plan. So we're recommending that along. So we're recommending that along with building inspector.
Board, have any comments?
What's the current space used for that's going to be the yoga studio? What's there now? That space back here?
That's the yoga studio.
Yeah, what's there, what was there originally?
It used to be.
I'm sorry, the kitchen?
It used to be the kitchen.
Gotcha, thanks.
Have a motion, authorize waiver of the site plan?
So.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Okay. Dave and Charlie just want to bring up the issue on the LP, those on steep slopes on 141-138.
Do you want to maybe explain what's next?
I'm going to, well, at that point, I want to get that comment.
No, I meant the yoga.
Oh, and the yoga?
Yeah.
They're done.
Okay, I just want to understand. So is this allowing me to go ahead and start the building? What's the procedure now?
Yeah, you'll have to, you'll have to go get a building permit. But there isn't a site plan review by the building, by the planning board. There's no modifications. We've waived our right to review it, so you're now just doing the building inspector. I'm sorry. I apologize. Oh, Mark knew everything. Take care, sir.
I'm the county planning board chair.
Should I ask him a few more questions?
I could ask a few more. Oh, I'm surprised he's here. I thought maybe he was just floating. I just want to make sure that we do what we're supposed to do on it. Steep slope protection and permitting required in your memo, Dave? You refer to 141-138A as a requirement for permit. And if I go through 140-38 itself, there are two things that the board has not done yet, which we have to incorporate. Those things that we have to incorporate is A, is referral of B in 140-38B, referral to the Environmental Conservation Commission.
Cool. I said cool.
Cool, okay.
That's always a good idea.
And they get everything, but this is a formal request for them for review and a And that there's a notice required that the completed application has to be mailed by first-class mail to the adjoining property owners, including those across the street adjoining the involved property. Then such property owners will have 10 days of said notice to submit written comment to the approval authority with regard to said application. I know we've had some other property owners here who are joining, but I think we should formally do this. Second part is Part D, public hearing shall be held by the approval authority on the application made hereunder. I would like to amend the existing public hearing to include the steep slope site and keep the public hearing open.
Yes.
Is that okay? So I think we have to do those things that are, at least from a procedural point of view, to do. Did I get them all?
Yep.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question about the referral.
Yeah.
What material will go to the CAC as part of the referral?
Everything.
So everything that Mr. Stutz and we've submitted up to this point will go over to the CAC?
The file will go, yes.
Okay. Great, thank you very much.
So I think from my point of view, at this stage of the game, we have to send it to the ENCB. We have to notice, amend the public hearing notice to include the steep slope requirements of 141-138.
I was actually understanding last month that that public hearing notice was included in the public, so it didn't end up.
Did it say that?
The notice that was sent to all the adjoining property owners did reference a public hearing for steep slopes and subdivision.
So this public hearing probably closed.
Do you have the others?
Yeah.
Okay.
So you could do those other things and still close the public hearing.
I would argue for leaving the public hearing open if possible.
Oh, I don't want to wait until we get back to the ENCB stuff.
Yeah.
I would say that it wasn't our understanding that was the case because the CAC was not at this public hearing and we would want to have a public hearing if it's required in front of them so that they can hear the testimony that's being given at the hearing.
We're not going to close the public hearing at this meeting. We're going to keep it open. We haven't sent it off to the ENCB to officially get comment back. I'd like to get that back before I close the public hearing. On it, they have a time limit of when they're supposed to get it back by. So I would propose we keep the public hearing open to the first meeting in January.
So moved. I'll second.
They're given 45 days.
If I may, what would that date be, the first meeting in January?
Second Monday of the month. So that would be 3rd, 4th, 5th, 5th and 7th, probably January 12th. That would give the ENCB an opportunity to report back and get it on the record in our, in a folder and we can go from there on it. I need some.
I have another question, Mr. Chairman. So if we want to submit comments to the CAC that addresses the steep slopes requirements, that should be done in writing?
Yeah, I'm not sure when and where the ENCB will be meeting when they get it, but they'll review the comments if you want to add additional comments to it. Like I said, they get the complete folder of all material that we received. Your material, everybody's material on it.
But it's not, they won't be present at your meeting as well?
No.
They can. Sorry, I'm part of the ENCB.
Okay.
So we do attend sometimes. We will be meeting next Wednesday.
Okay. Is that your only meeting before the end of the year?
Yes.
And is it?
Next day before Thanksgiving or the first Wednesday in December?
First Wednesday. When do we meet?
Yeah.
We meet the first Wednesday of February.
And that's what I thought. So it'll be the first Wednesday in December. Oh, that material.
We may have to loan the file because we may not have the ability to, we may not technically be open to copy all that.
Well.
I'd like a copy, what works with you.
Yeah, I know.
If we have an extra copy of all your material, if, I'll loan a mine, all right? I don't want them to be short-sighted, so they need anything that's not in Charlie's file that we have. I'll loan a mine with, okay? So it's December 1st, December, whatever it is, first Wednesday in December.
The follow-up that you mentioned, Mr. Chairman, about mailing the application to the neighbors, is that something that the planning board office would do or is it something the applicant?
Applicant does it. Yeah, I'm looking at 140-138, Section C.
She requires the notice, not the entire application.
Right.
Which we did. Right, and that's why I was asking the question. It's not clear to me that there's anything further required in that to the garden. The notice went, the notice included the steep slopes permit reference. I mean, we can.
Yeah, I need some.
I'll take a close look too.
Okay.
I mean, once required, we'll do it.
I just want to make sure what we have on record, what is required and meets that requirement. I don't want to leave any holes in there. So with that, I did give Charlie a copy of John's latest engineering analysis. So he has a copy of, well, we received it over the weekend. As you know, we really don't have a planning office anymore this past week and we've had difficulty in communication. So I appreciate how you got it in and through it and appreciate getting the material the way we did. And I'm just saying that if there's additional material, we're going to have the same issue. So just rely on Augusta right through the end.
On that point, may I ask that if there are written submissions that the, the neighbors perhaps get them directly to us? I mean, I'm sure you'll get them to us as soon as you can, but tonight that meant five minutes before we started.
I understand.
And I'm not blaming that. What I'm saying is we've only got a week as it is. Could perhaps the neighbors send us copies of anything written? That can be mutual? Sure. Yeah.
Exchange of information. This is going to be all open anyway. It's easier to get to a conclusion if we're cooperative at this point.
Thank you.
Okay? But I'll let you two work that out.
Thank you.
We have enough to try to get power in the building, much less a copy machine, right?
Don't take it as hard.
Is there anything particularly you want to highlight, Dave, that you want Charlie to be aware of in your report?
Well, I'd like to get cleared up that Sheet 3, that seems to be a question. I'd like to see where the drainage channels really go. I mean, we have a Sheet 3 that's been submitted and there's been some dispute over how accurate that is.
They actually went out, some planning board members came out there with us. This is LP builder's property. This is the existing swell that comes through. This is that old farm road that actually cuts off the swell from heading towards Mr. Stutz's house and it brings it around here, around both floors, and when it tops, it goes straight like this. So again, this is Mr. Stutz's house. The majority of the water comes down that Cedar Hill Road. You'll see that very, very large stream that comes through and passes right in front of Mr. Stutz's house and that discharges all of these two pipes and that's where the majority of the flow is coming from. I had the surveyor out there, went in and greened and he's the one that picked this up. I could have him stamp a sheet if you want. But again, we were out there with the board and this is what we saw.
But the photographs that he had though.
Where the, yeah, the culverts?
Is this the photograph that this was the driveway that was covered in water?
Yes. This is actually the stream forming along the road, along the driveway. These are the two culverts right by the.
Right, but he had a picture, someone standing north taking a picture south.
Those are your, those are the culverts that you showed.
Yes, the Russian cobra, yeah, that was a cross.
Okay.
If I could further define the existing, again, very deep swell that the river, whatever stream that comes through, Mr. Stutz's driveway, it joins up with this. I could probably, I could probably get that off of Google Earth. We got the sophisticated version that's on the table. I could put together a plan for that. What I'd like to do though, I mean, when we get to the end of this thing, hopefully not be presumptuous, but would all of these sheets, we're up to 10 sheets now with two of those, I'll tell you what, that's a first for me. Which sheets would we need to get stamped, signed by the chairman and which ones are just for informational purposes or would they all have to be? I'd like to bring in additional information in.
Generally, when we're reviewing it from a board perspective, the board members need copies on it. If we, when we get to, if we got an approval process on this, there are my laws and there are a couple of paper copies, but it's not.
Well, it's all drawings in here that, again, for informational purposes, that don't really have anything to do with engineering or something. So would we be able to drop those sheets out? I think that's.
Well, no, I think generally what I do is stamp, we stamp a package. So if there's 10 sheets in a package, we stamp, they stay together, all of them.
I was at a place, if I do that map, as I was talking about from the Google Earth, it's going to be a color. Now, would you do that? Maybe you can file a color map?
What are you going to do, Dave?
An exhibit that we can see.
I can center from the southern ones. Okay, that works.
Time out, time out. One at a time, okay? All right.
Mr. Chairman, I just would ask to have the opportunity to say something about this. We were out on walking side road with the sheet with that map in front of us. I'd like to ask John Mowen York to be able to just be grateful to that.
You know what, folks? We can go back and forth on this. I'd rather just wait till the next meeting, let him get the drawing up, let you take a look at it, let's have some comments on it and then, because the board doesn't have any information on this, I mean, to the extent that we've seen it. So let us, you know, do our own due diligence, at least it could bring us up to speed, give you time to take a hard look at it, because I don't want to be missing something and shooting off the top of the head now. So I'd rather wait till.
I have to wait. I just want to point out that that referenced that drainage going, I was talking about during the discussion, today was not an overwhelming rainstorm. It did not top anything. It came directly through. What the schematic shows is a dog going to the right and to the north away from the track that brings it into my land. You saw the photos, Dave. It went directly to my land. It's just a little bit of rainfall coming in. Not even enough to break through the logging trail, just cut across the logging trail and came right in there directly and not go north.
I understand.
Can I say one thing?
Only one small thing, because I want to wrap this up.
All right, very small. This is just, I'm not trying to say he's lying all the way by law, just common sense. You made a decision to walk through the property with Dave and Mr. Lawyer here. And there are only three guys show up, obviously, and we walked through. And this guy here, who has the biggest complaint, he had no nerve to show up. Now, we walked two hours through the property and I thanked these three guys. And that day was raining and the storm, the constant sunny wind caused, had water on it. And they walked up, down, up, across east, north, southwest, not once for two hours, every single one. And not a single one made a conclusion that this water or this property goes to his land. It does go to the other guys which are. It does go to the other guys, which is not here. And it goes under his driveway. And I just wanted to be quite frank with you. He has the knowledge, he has experience of these things. These two, they walk through, they might be just like me, they don't have experience, but they do see the water which way it goes. That has nothing...
Okay. Thank you very much.
Can I ask two questions before we wrap up about this? Number one, I don't think members of the public are invited to site visits, so that might have been why he was, I'm not sure, situation in that specific case. Number two, did the applicant receive copies of Mr. Studd's engineer's reports? Because there's a lot of questions that I'd be curious to know what the applicant has to say.
The first one you referred to from January, I received that just by kind of planning board meeting, and I received one today. The interim one in between, I never did receive. I guess it was down in March. March, yeah.
I mean, yeah.
Well, to lawyers, work on that. Make sure he has a March copy. Okay.
First of all, the operating board office, it's been there, they request it.
I'm forward to it.
Okay. We'll find this on board. Okay.
Mike, can we note that this application was referred to the ENCP on January 7th of 2014 with this referral sheet? And then every time a new update is given, Mr. Brown provides us 13 copies, and one is put in their mailbox as well.
And we'll just follow up.
I haven't received any response from them.
Well, we got a liaison here. You know, make sure, make sure they yea know something or other, give something back to me, okay? I appreciate it. What?
The only thing technically they'd be missing is anything from tonight.
Okay.
And this is a copy of the public notice that was met to all property letters that does address the steep slopes.
Okay.
Kelly is on top of it.
Yes, yes. Thank you.
Thank you all. All right. I got a couple of planning board administrative issues. One is the Hampton Inn Crosswalk. I had a phone call from DPW. In the Hampton Inn, we had proposed a crosswalk to Shoprite Plaza. DPW in modeling and, you know, again, we approved this in 2010. DPW is looking at the rebuild of Southside Corners, questioning from a safety standpoint, having a crosswalk within 300 feet of another crosswalk. Okay? And one up at the top of the road, and this is kind of in the middle of the road. I understand his concerns for it. Again, we did the approval before anybody talked about putting six-foot shoulders on either side of the... By corners. I wanted to, I told him, I wanted to arrange it for a board discussion about the issue and how we feel on it. I could see legitimately his concern, having somebody cross foot corners down that far from the intersection. And whether that's, you know, from a safety standpoint.
Obviously, wouldn't be in traffic last down there.
I talked to Ken Wurst, the traffic consultant today, and he said that the reason that crosswalk was there is he didn't believe that the people from Hampton would walk up to the corner.
I don't think so either.
That he felt that it makes sense for it to be there. I also asked him...
You know people are going to dart across the street.
I asked him about the suicide lanes. He said that the DOT recommended those lanes, that to put a left in the way the county wants is going to knock out about 100 feet of view for that, so he was still not a figure of I guess the purpose of this is the county is trying to make this conform to their new The traffic consultant doesn't agree with what they're asking for. We did look at the sidewalk. That was the other comment that the county had about the sidewalk going up by the Hampton Inn instead of being down on the roadway. It would be very difficult. I remember suggesting that, too, but looking at the plans, the final plans with the stormwater, it would be very difficult to be able to do that. They have a, yeah, right next to it.
Yeah.
It's that 10 pounds of flour and a five-pound sack. So that was Ken's recommendations on this. I have talked to the county engineer. He's basically wants to conform this to their, their plan. He said he talked to Barry Bedenbok, the engineer for the Hamptons, and Barry has no problem doing what the county wants.
I'm sure Barry would have no problem doing what the county wants.
I think he wants to get it built. I think he'll...
And if you remember, when we approved the Shoprite development, we acknowledged that they would have the crosswalk, and they would be able to handle it on their side, too. So, you know, it was raised to me. I said I would take it to the board, and... Did he call you, too, Dave? You talked to him? DPW, okay. And I didn't get it was like all or nothing, but it was a concern that he had. And, you know, if Ken thinks it's still a good idea to keep the crosswalk there, our traffic consultant, I would think that most of us would agree with that.
One thing I noticed driving there is that, because this is uphill to 299 and then sort of down, like people are really going fast.
Yeah.
Once they go through that light, they're zooming, and a lot of black and white cars go through there zooming.
You're saying when they're going south on, on Southside?
Yes, because police... But anyway, yeah. You know, from a safety point of view, I think that was the only concern I had thought about. But if it still makes sense to have the crosswalk there, because of the same issue that people won't walk up 300 feet to the corner, go across the corner, and then walk down.
There's one of these things in, I think it was some town in Massachusetts, maybe Amherst, and they have, so when you walk up to a crosswalk, the thing sort of senses you there, like, and it has this little thing about five feet high with a yellow light on either side of the street that starts flashing. It notifies people that somebody's approaching a crosswalk. And it's sort of a really cool thing, you know? It just works flawlessly, and people just stop, you know? No, because a lot of times you, it's not so easy to tell when somebody's near a crosswalk or is getting ready to step in. And then this is a pretty neat system.
Sounds like an Amherstian project.
Yeah, well, they have them all over town, and they all seem to work.
So what if somebody walks a dog on that side of the street?
I'm not sure if you have to be alongside of it or within a span of it.
Yeah, there's probably some sense of that, looking at who's up there and that. But we, you know, it's one of the conditions of the Hampton Inn's approval, so to change it, we'd have to have the board come to condition on it. But if we're comfortable with leaving the crosswalk in, let DPW work around it. That's where I'm coming from on it.
Sounds good.
Yeah, I'm fine.
You're comfortable with it three, four years ago?
I know.
Let's be consistent.
Dave, you want to bring that to the DPW's attention? Yep. Okay. The other thing I got, and I was going to show you what I proposed doing for next year, and we'll give it a whirl on it, is the first meeting of the month will be for applications, review of applications. The second meeting of the month will be a workshop for us to start reviewing some of the things that we should be doing, that we haven't had a chance to talk about. The only things I would consider putting on the workshop meeting would be a final approval that was, we got something from county, it was a final approval. Simplified site plan would be another thing that we'd put on. But basically, what I'd be looking at is things that we should be working on, zoning codes, amendments. One of the areas I'd like to look at, because I know the village is looking at, is, they call it their B2 or their 32 North corridor, how we can look at what they're doing there and what we should be doing in the town side of it to effectuate a continuum there. So it'll be, yeah, maybe we break it up as different, commercial, B2, whatever. We got to talk about that. I figure that's... Big enough and small enough to get our arms to start on that. So the agenda, agendas for next year, as soon as we get a copying machine or a computer working system, will show meetings on the first of the month, first, you know, the second Monday of the month, and then workshops on it. And what I'd ask the board members to do is, what are the areas that we want to consider working on and talking about? Whether things in the zoning codes or things in the master plan draft, there should be areas that we should focus on in those workshops, and what areas that we have trouble with when we're reviewing applications that we should consider. But it gives it an opportunity for the planning board to do, maybe some planning. Okay?
Sounds great.
So if Kelly actually gets into an office that actually works, has heat and lights and things like that, it'll be in her packet for the next meeting in December. We only meet once in December, second Monday of the month is our meeting date. I did look up on a solar zoning amendment. Central Hudson does have a buyback rate, and it does span commercial and residential. So if you wanted to put up a solar on your house, you know, you can hook in with them. They have other things that they allow, and I didn't bring the rate codes with me, but they allow other things to fall into that same category. And what I would like to do with the board is, I'll bring it in next meeting, but take a look at that to see if those other things, I want to talk with Stacy, actually require, because some of it's farm, on a farm, and what's allowed on a farm or not on a farm. But if we want to include those types of generations in a code or not, because there are different things. There's, I can't think of them now off the top of my head. I know there were some on a farm of burning or generation from manure and things of that sort, that they would, again, you could apply and get a, from Central Hudson to get a buyback rate on it if you built one. Now, does that have to go through a building, building permit? Does it have to go through a site plan, things of that sort? Those are the things.
Well, that's an interesting question.
Yes, that's, so I'm just, all I want to do is kind of flesh it out, that, yeah, we acknowledge that that's allowed by them, but we don't want it here in the code, or yes, we do in the code to put that in also. So it's a couple of different things. I'll bring in the codes, and we can kick around on that, on it. But so, when we're drawing up the zoning amendment, I believe we will have it applicable to residential and commercial. There's two different categories.
I had a discussion last week with the supervisor, who indicated that the white dot farm proposal is at least dormant, if not dead. So she would prefer that the board focus on the use of rooftop and simplified plan review for solar installations that are non-obtrusive, whether it's on, and what I did was to look back at the code amendments we did last year. And we had added solar as one of the simplified plan review, but it has to be a type 2 action. It limits it to a commercial building less than 4,000 square feet. So the question that comes up is, does the board want to extend that to allow simplified plan review for larger installations and forego the constraint of it being a type 2 action?
If you recall, the one that we did for the storage place, when the initial application was 5,400, so it doesn't take too much of that roof line to get over 4,000.
Right.
But, so, all right, so, and again, I was, I didn't think we were ready for the large commercial one, large installations, anyway, at this point in the game. I was just looking at the ones they're proposing, which is the residential and the, and the commercial with the buyback of the excess. And so, you know, having this and having that, and just making sure that we're...
The residential, I think, is covered as an accessory use.
Mm-hmm.
And it would, it would not require any simplified plan review if it's accessory to the single-family residence. The place where it gets interesting is when you look at the rooftop installations, the appearing of these box uses, such as Stop &amp; Shop, and the potential for that to be there. But down by Gold's Gym, there's Benadec, Benadec has a satellite office, and there was a bunch of guys working on the roof two months ago. Now there is a solar installation, lines the whole roof. It's only visible from the gym side. If you look at the other side, there's a probably one-foot, two-foot parapet, and from the highway, you can't see it. And it's larger than 4,000 square feet, I'm sure, but it's the sort of non-obtrusive, non-obtrusive use that would seem to be compatible with surrounding uses, and at the same time supporting the town's interest in looking to solar and other renewable resources. So it requires some weaving between the lines to fit that in. If it is a simplified plan review, it still would remain subject to the board's determination and the building inspector's determination, that that's how it should proceed. So you would have an opportunity to look it over. The building inspector would make that decision about referring in the first case. And then if both of those reviewing authorities agree, it goes simplified plan, and it saves a month in the application review.
Yeah, I mean, you could put 50,000 square foot up on Stop &amp; Shop roof, which is a lot bigger. And again, if they had a parapet and had it facing the right direction, you wouldn't see it at all, potentially. So, all right, we'll put that back on the agenda, and we'll kick it around a little bit, and how far, how big we want to go. And again, on simplified site plans, just remember that we don't have to waive it. If we want to do a site plan review, we can do it then and there on any application that comes before us under that condition. That's all I had.
I had one other thing I wanted to discuss. When we were here three weeks ago, we were talking about the process for the CVS application, and I was trying to get a better understanding for myself regarding the SEACER process and what would trigger a full EIS or a full EAF. And it seems to me that there are triggers that would require more analysis than what we're proposing to do right now. You know, for instance, it's talking about at least one significant adverse impact, and this board definitely seemed to dial into the idea that traffic is a very serious consideration that needs to be looked at thoroughly. And, you know, just reading through the law, it's talking about in section 617.6, the initial review, as early as possible in an agency's formulation of an action it proposes to undertake. An agency may instead use the full EAF for unlisted actions. So even if this doesn't, even if it's not triggering a type 1, it still could be considered an unlisted, which would trigger a full EAF. And several times it talks about the action may include the potential of at least one significant adverse environmental impact. But in addition to that, it talks about the impairment of character, aesthetics, resources of an existing community or neighborhood. So, you know, this is the gateway to New Pulse. That should be carefully considered, and that is definitely what's discussed here in the SEACER process. It's talking about the lead agency must consider... the lead agency must consider reasonably related long-term, short-term, direct, indirect, cumulative impacts, including other simultaneous or subsequent actions which are included in any long-range plan. Talks about the significance of a likely consequence and whether it's irreversible. It just seems like there's lots of language...
You're looking at the regulations?
I'm just quoting right from the DEC website, SEACER.
There's different layers, it's like the, for the cabala, there's different levels of interpretation.
Section 617.
Okay, that's the regulation.
That's the whole regulation.
That's the basic nuts and bolts, but if you look at the AAF workbook, and if you look at the forms that they provide, or the supplemental materials they provide, you take that basic nut and bolt, and then you look at it in the context of these, you look at it in context, basically. So, for example, they point out that 250 units in New York City is not a significant impact, it's not presumed to be a significant impact, whereas 250 units in the town of New Falls is, and that's because of the different context and the infrastructure that's available to support each of those kinds of uses, and the, again, the context in which you experience it. So if you go to New York and you see a building with 250 units going up, it's not uncharacteristic.
Right, it's not going to trigger a type 1 review, but I think what I'm looking at is, you know, we're talking about traffic, we're talking about a site that could have, you know, just with the three pads, 121 parking spots, where people regularly complain about the congestion at that corner already, without any development on that corner. And then I think, because New Falls is unique, and because we have visitors, and because we are a community that's noted for its aesthetics, the gateway to our community matters a great deal. So I'm definitely looking at it using, as you're suggesting, that unique lens, which is particular to our community.
Well, that's an interesting question.
To look at that context, to look for the information that you need to make your determination. But one of the things that we still, as far as I know, don't, we don't have an up-to-date traffic study.
Yeah, but I don't, I don't understand, it's like, are we putting a cart before the horse, the horse before the cart? I mean, this specifically says, initial review as early as possible, I mean, that's what it's talking about in 617.6.
And we've done that.
So...
In case, we have done that, and we have been wrestling with the aesthetics, the gateway, what the fabric of the building is, right along as they were working through their conceptual plans. The second thing we hit on was the, was the traffic and the congestion potential up there as another big area that we need to work on on it. So upfront, we picked out the two areas that we were concerned about, and are working our way through them. I agree that we haven't had a traffic study that meets the requirements on it, but that's one of the big areas, and the aesthetics we're still working on.
But I just don't understand, if there's, we have a stated process, like a scoping process, why aren't we doing the scoping process, whether it's volunteered by the applicant, or we're dictating what the scoping document should look like, which would then be the first step before a draft EIS?
That's correct, it's before the draft EIS, but it's after the positive declaration that there is a significant adverse, like to be, at least one significant adverse impact. If you look at something like traffic, you need to look at a traffic study, and you need to understand how, I mean, frankly, you didn't get the letter from DOT until last month, saying we want to look at it in this form and manner, so if you have somebody doing a traffic study, and then the intersection is revised in a significant manner, you have to go do another traffic study to understand how that particular element may impact.
So who are we waiting for in terms of information regarding aesthetic impacts?
Aesthetic impacts.
Yeah, I mean, if we're waiting for a traffic consultant's report, what about the aesthetic consultant's report?
Well, they have proposed a number of different modifications to it, they've asked the variables associated with that, which is their right, it's a commercial zone, and they have made modifications. Are they the final ones, are we looking for it, no, we haven't gotten down to a site plan yet on it, that would show the aesthetic impact, the landscaping that we're going to require for a development like that, in that location. So we're still not there on that part, but they're still, you know, they're not there yet either, and they're still in the design stage, and we haven't come to a conclusion on it. Generally, it's on site plan when you get into the aesthetics portion on it, there isn't an architectural review approved by code in a town for buildings on it, so you work with a applicant to come up with a suitable site, because, like I said, they could put up a brick building and meet code requirements, and as of right, but generally, they don't want to do that either. So we're still working on aesthetics, because we haven't gotten, we've gotten conceptual plans of the building, conceptual plans of the landscaping, and we were trying to get to a preliminary site plan, but we're still missing a traffic study, and we're still missing a number of pieces to make a determination on it. So we're still gathering. What's unusual about CVS, which was kind of threw me off, is when an applicant comes in with a conceptual, and starts talking to you about it, and he gets their ideas, and you give him your ideas on the conceptual, they turn around and give you a site plan. In this case, they turned around and gave us another conceptual, and then turned around and gave us another conceptual, and they've never gone to a site plan yet, so I still think we're like at the first meeting with CVS on conceptual reviews.
It's not too late.
So it gets modifications on it left or right on it, and we try to incorporate the latest data. For instance, you know, the rail trail, DOT is going to build the trail from Highland at the conclusion at South Street into New Falls. We got to get that from DOT to see where it's coming into New Falls and how it's coming in. I have an idea, but I'd rather them say it, and we got to make sure that we incorporate that into the plan also. The six-foot shoulder is going on Southwood Corners Road, is six-foot, if we put them on Northwood Corners for the length of the property, if they meet that, is that, or should it be 10-foot? I, you know, those are the kind of things that...
They seem like all questions that we would ask to be included in a scoping document.
I think so, too.
No, those are the kind of questions, no, you don't have scoping document, that's more of a site plan decision, that's, you know, you can look at a site plan and ask for those things on a site plan.
Can't have a scoping session before you have a decision whether or not it's a class 1 action?
Well, it's, yeah, how significant are we, we're on it, we don't need a...
There are some uses where you know it's a type 1, there are other, and will have an impact, there are other type 1 actions where it may not have an impact that requires an EIS, and you have to look at those on a case-by-case basis. The Mohawk subdivision, as it's currently conceived, it is a type 1 action, there's a historical landscape, but it's been reconceived to be a single subdivision.
No, I understand it, and that's the point that you were making earlier, is that it might not automatically check the type 1 boxes, but it could easily be considered an unlisted action that requires a full EAF, based on the definitions of SEACER 617.
And I was asking Dave before, I thought we do have a full EAF for this, the long form, which is all you really need for purposes of even a type 1 action. So in terms of having information, you want to make sure you get the information that you do need for that particular use, so there are boxes on there which talk about traffic generation, when it gets to a certain level, then you need a traffic study, and when you look at the traffic study, then you can evaluate if these will be significant impacts, or if they're things that you just take into account the way you would do with any other subdivision or site plan that requires working through a process to get to a conclusion that they're safe and adequate actions. It's not, it's not, you know, it's not a clear line, it's not black and white, with most things, you have to go through some level of review, and then as you go through the EIS, you're looking at the impacts of the result, and if you find any of those impacts are moderate or large, that by itself doesn't require an EIS, you have to go through those specific impacts and determine whether they meet the criteria in 617.6.
We can do a general review of the document, nothing, you know, earth shattering on it, but, you know, we can take a review of CVS, go through part 2 and part 3, part 2, just kind of talk about each one of the issues that is listed in there, and see what we would take as being completed, or meeting the requirements of what we were looking for. Obviously, if we, if we look at the threshold on traffic, and we think that it could have a potential impact, this would require a traffic study, you put that aside, but then if you look at water and septic, well, septic is minimal for the site, for the application, it's one bathroom, and then we say that septic is approved by Department of Health, so it's not a septic for a 250-room apartment, it's just one bathroom and minor water, so that's not, it doesn't meet the threshold on that one. If you look at water, it's probably the same way, and if you look at endangered species, I mean, you can go through each of the parts of it, and then you can say, this is what I really need in that area, but it's not, I don't need them in all the areas, and I really would want to concentrate on these particular areas, and minimize the stuff that is of some minor concern or insignificant portion of it. But we can walk through the document and point it out. Nine times out of 10, when you have an application before you, you can hone in on what the issue is, and have that issue addressed in detail, as deep a detail as you want, but a number of the other areas just don't rise up to that level on it, and, so, that's why you can, doing an environmental impact statement, it just puts on a lot of the material that's not used anywhere else. In the case of the resort, there's a big water issue, there's a big septic issue because we have a sewage treatment facility across the road, how are we going to handle which and why?
Contaminant soil.
Big issue on traffic.
Contaminant soil.
You know, pesticides on that soil was an old orchard that one, one way back when, so there are more things on that, that raise up to the level of significance, and when you get up to, you know, four or five of them, you might as well do the whole study. It's a weighing of each of those things going forward.
Right, I hear you that there's more going on at the Wildberry site, but in terms of traffic and the aesthetics of the gateway to New Falls, this property is much more significant, I believe personally, than Wildberry.
Well, it's relevant on traffic.
We're still at the beginning of figuring it out.
Aesthetics and traffic were the two biggest issues on the Hampton Inn, and we worked through an expanded EAF on that with the board.
That's what you end up doing, is you expand in those areas that you want to hone in on, without going into the...
I basically agree with you, and I think those are very important issues. There's also other things that I'm really concerned about, and that's, what are they going to use for fill, they got to fill all that land in. What's the material, is it construction debris, or is it topsoil, what's going to go in there? It's an environment, a tremendous environmental impact, and so a lot of issues, and I think we're going to go to a full EIS, but we can't make that statement at this point.
We can have this discussion all night, but... Yeah, obviously, the difference of bridge, but I think we should just walk through a form, and try to bring in those issues to the forefront, which we have or don't have on it, and, again, questions like fill, you can dictate what the fill is, all right, it isn't, you know, from a site plan perspective, it isn't something that the board has no handle on, the board can dictate what's brought in and what meets the requirements, and there may be conditions in the code, which I am not aware of, but that requiring that, but we, let's walk through the form, rather than just...
Yeah, Mike, I'm not seeing this, and we go through something like this all night, but, you know, just the idea that...
Yeah.
You know, we're all comfortable, I just want to be thorough, I want to understand the process, that's all.
When do you trigger, when do you don't, and things like, but I think just walking through the form may be helpful, because we've had monumental projects and real small ones, we haven't had the ones that trigger a number of different areas like that. Anything in the B2 district on Main Street always triggers something, traffic being one of them.
Okay, so we'll try to get that going on now, we'll see what falls out on the agendas, and, you know, maybe it ends up being a workshop type of thing.
Wildberry is planning on being back in January, probably February, I don't know where Mohawk is now, but they're going someplace.
Soon.
Going to be here in October, and they're not here yet.
Soon.
Mohawk's going to be here, you know.
They're, yeah, next meeting, they did, they did submit plans, updated plans.
Just for the subdivision.
Right. Okay, motion to adjourn. Second, favor, I, y'all have a happy Thanksgiving, folks, enjoy your food.
I think you get a quick tour of the meeting, because there's a little chaos